Good evening. I'd like to call this City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Taylor.
Tonight, I would like to request a moment of silence for Marine Sergeant Eldon William Grimm of Manassia. He lost his life in World War II on the Gilbert Islands in the South Pacific Ocean on November 23rd, 1943, at the age of 26. His remains will be returned to Oak Hill Cemetery this Saturday, May 26th, at 2:00 p.m., where he will be honored with a full military funeral. Sergeant Eldon William Grimm, welcome home. May you rest in peace here in your home state of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repello.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on anything on the agenda tonight or anything that would be of interest to the Common Council, you could step up to the microphone. You have up to five minutes, and we would ask for your name and address for the record.
Christopher Evansen, 523 Broad Street. I'm just here to offer support for Alderman Taylor's efforts to push to have the Racine Street Bridge repaired and not replaced. To my knowledge, we've had no explanation from the mayor or the controller how we're going to pay for this bridge if it is replaced and we own it. We haven't had any estimates of those costs that I'm aware of. Also had no explanation or update on R-1517 passed a year ago by this council and directed to the state, asking them to retain ownership even in the event the bridge is replaced with a new bridge. Having heard nothing, I'm assuming that that's pretty much a dead end after a year has passed. I would remind the council and the city that we have a $32 million outstanding steam plant debt, the highest tax rates of any Fox Valley community, and to take on the ownership of a $20 million-plus bridge when we don't know what those costs are is a luxury we can't afford. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Christine Kopp, 518 Broad Street. I'm a single-family residential homeowner and occupant and a city taxpayer. No bridge. Alternative B, reconstruction of the bridge is what I'm -- my -- we're requesting. No roundabout. Our neighborhood is densely populated. It's a densely populated urban area, working hard to come back. Your proposed plan will increase traffic speed and flow, resulting in a dangerous and unsafe crossing for the many children, elderly, and pedestrians attempting to cross Racine Street at Broad and nearby. Our neighborhood includes an elementary school and parks, public library, post office, restaurants, taverns, and a commercial district. Many are regularly attempting to cross Racine Street, including my spouse and myself. It is your goal to destroy the fabric -- is it your goal to destroy the fabric of our community? This is thoughtless and cruel. David Papst, DOT, Wisconsin DOT Director of Bureau of Safety, in a May 14th, 2018 post crescent article, anyway, I'm quoting right from what he said, what was in the paper. Getting hit by a car going 35 miles an hour can be fatal. In 2017, Wisconsin pedestrian fatalities, there were 63. In 2016, there were 49. And in 2018, so far, there are 15. And the -- this is from the -- is this -- the next data is from the Governor's Highway Safety Association Study. It's pedestrian -- it's under the section, which is pedestrian fatalities by road type. Thirty-three percent of all pedestrian fatalities take place on local municipal streets. Twenty-five percent take place on state highways, 16% on U.S. highways, 11% interstates, and 9% county highways. Nationwide, there's been an increase of 46% of pedestrian fatalities since 2009, and this is from the Insurance Institute for Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Tim Lenth, 537 Broad Street and 204 Main Street, Manassia, as a business. I've got a very lengthy proposal here, and actually, after coming up here multiple times in front of this council, asking for clarification, I just basically, I'm going to state a couple few things here, is that I'm against the bridge as a replacement. I am for the bridge as a repair. Totally against the roundabout is a couple of people have already mentioned, there's a lot of things that have detriment to downtown versus making it better. I think it's going to take people away from the downtown versus bringing them in. There's a lot of opinions on that, but that is mine. I've asked the council several times over the last year and into 2016 about who's going to pay for this, and I was told by Alderman Nichols that that was their job to do, and so far, I've not heard anything. So I'm requesting at this time a written proposal from this council as to where the money's coming from and who's going to pay for it. Because as I said back in 2016, I'm not really in favor of increasing my taxes to pay for something that, number one, I don't know if anybody in the community is really 100% behind. You've got a few people on this council that are really pushing for it, and the rest of the citizens have not even been given an option because the option to put it as a public referendum has been vetoed. So I'm hoping that this council can get past that, reintroduce that as an option to put it out there for the citizens to decide, and we'll go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
Quickly, I'm also in favor of a rehabilitation of the bridge, not a replacement. I echo many of the comments made previously. But what I would like to address tonight is the -- on the agenda, the changes to the ordinance and resolutions, Item K. I'm very concerned about this, and I hope that the council asks some direct questions. They've been totally rewritten, and what struck me first and foremost was Item 17 -- no, 16 was struck, where the mayor reports to the common council. So that tweaked my interest. This is a council-led authority. It's not a mayor dictatorship, and I want to remind the council that they have the final authority on items. But the way these ordinances are written, I have several questions because it appears to me it's taking powers away from the council, away from the Personnel Committee, and handing them over to the mayor, such as appointments of department heads, appointments of the hiring process, and if any of this, the question needs to be asked if these are changes to the charter ordinance. Directly, I do believe the one item that talks about retaining the assessor, it's currently a three-year term, I believe that's been deleted, and that is a charter ordinance. A charter ordinance requires two-thirds vote. It also requires publication in the legal newspaper and a 60-day review before it becomes final. Is this also changing the charter ordinance that governs the three-year term of the attorney and the three-year term of the clerk and just makes that an "at-will" position? That question needs to be asked because that would also be a charter ordinance change. This is serious stuff. You're rewriting city code, where it is now easy for citizens, as myself, to be able to bring up municipal code and read it. A lot of it has just been struck. One of it looked like almost the entire chapter was struck. So what are -- what is the protocol? And it's very confusing the way a lot of it is written. So I am very concerned about some of this. I know part of it has always been where the Personnel Committee reviews applicants, they do their recommendation to the mayor, the mayor either accepts it or rejects it with the final approval by the council. It now appears that Personnel Committee's totally out of it. It's the mayor, the Chair of Personnel, and three department heads that are doing the hiring. So I -- the council needs to put its foot down and start letting the mayor know he does not run the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else this evening?
Jody Zaner at 216 Main Street. I'm a business owner. I am in favor of having the bridge refurbished and not replaced. Furthermore, I do not feel it's necessary that we need to add a roundabout. It's very hard for me to fathom why the council would essentially agree to kick out established professionals that are in the building that bring their client -- clients to the downtown and support us, all for this roundabout. In addition, people are going to be going in circles because there is no cross through between Racine Street and Broad Street. One further point is the sale or that the city or -- I'm sorry, the state will demolish the building. There are investors who are now interested in part of that building to turn that into high-end apartments, which are the type of people that any city, not just Manassia, who is on an upswing of making improvements, want in our backyard, or our front yard for that matter. These are professionals that are graduating from college, doctors and lawyers, that are looking for places on the river in a small town with great support, and for you to have the state demolish that building for the betterment of -- for us to own a bridge is very hard for me to understand. And those types of professionals bring other professionals when they enjoy and like what's happening in their area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Delphos, 85, Taco Street. I'm for refurbishing the bridge, not replacing it. Also, I think you need to put this bridge up for referendum again and not -- it needs to go up for a referendum, and this is why the two aldermen lost their positions as aldermen, because the people spoke and told them that they're not for replacing this bridge, and they need to have this bridge refurbished and not replaced. It needs to come up for a referendum again and let the people make the choice on this bridge, not the council. We need to have this come up for a referendum. Thank you.
Jeff Harvey, 514 Broad Street, Manassia, Wisconsin. I moved to Manassia as an investor, and I quickly turned my place into a single-family dwelling with the help of state and local money to make it a nice-looking property. I did that because I cared about what presentation did my city look like and what it represented for my family and what they represent. Past administration here didn't represent the city of Manassia. What is the city of Manassia? The fabric of Manassia is the people of Manassia. The people of Manassia. The government is not the fabric of Manassia. Each one of you are elected officials for a reason you're here today. You're here to represent the people in your area. You're here to represent not just your district, but all the people. It's not what Mr. Alderman Ted wants to do in his district. It's what's good for the city that all of you vote on it. What's good for everybody, and the problem we're having as the same administration that's not here today because the people spoke up, is because we're not representing the people. We're not doing the things that the people want done. Let's grab money from the state or federal. What -- let's -- that money's out there. Let's grab it. Let's use it. You know, that's not always for the best of Manassia. You know, I hear you want to tear down Doc Larson's commercial property. That's a lot of -- that's a lot of income for Manassia. That's a lot of tax dollars that comes to help our infrastructure. And it disappoints me that not one of you has stated what you're going to do to replace that money. Jimmy John's is not going to cut it, okay? We need to be upfront with the people of Manassia. This has been going on too long, this bridge project. If you're going to come with a plan and want to build a bridge, you say, we're going to -- if we're going to build this roundabout to go with -- to have this bridge, we're -- this is a plan we've got to come up with to recoup the money from killing that commercial property that where the roundabout's going to be. We need to learn, you need to learn, to be upfront with the people, and if we don't have answers, we're going to figure out answers. We're not going to run things through the administrations. We're going to bypass finance committees and this committee and that committee to get our pet project done. It's not your pet project. You are working for the people of Manassia. So there's no reason to hide things. If you don't know an answer, you say you don't know an answer, but we're going to figure one out, and we're going to get it done. Safety. The people of Manassia needs to be safe. You know, I've talked to Don. I've talked to Lux. I've talked to Greg Kyle. We've got a busy intersection. Whether you want people to cross at Broad and Racine or not, it doesn't matter. What matters is a kid, or my wife, or my dog getting run over when we try to cross that street and people aren't stopping. And we have yet to get a crosswalk sign, any kind of really formidable crosswalk sign at that intersection. Any flashing lights? Nothing, okay? Finally, the -- what's his name? Chief. Chief, now he's putting a little sign out there. Sometimes it's there, sometimes it ain't. But you know what? It's all about taking care of the people of Manassia. What does that mean? Keeping them safe, being honest with them, saying you screwed up? You screwed up. Okay, well, what are we going to do? Is this bridge really good? Do we really want to take on debt? We already have debt. Do we want to take on more debt and have, you know, because we think this will make us look flashy and more businesses will come? Will it really? Will it really? You know, the thing is, is when I talk to -- talk to your Public Works guys, when I talk to Sam, when I talk to these people about all these options you've got up here, you know what? Every one of them couldn't tell me the real reason behind these things. They couldn't really -- and not one of them said, "Well, this is really going to help the people of Manassia. This is really going to be safe, and this is really going to do this." It really -- I never really heard that. I never really heard them talk about that. And that's important. That's important. You're here today, and you're breathing because you're alive. You didn't get run over, you know? And every one of those proposals there? Yeah, I live in one of them streets behind that last pet project called the Headwaters condos, and now I have these lights that come up out of the ground pointing at my headlight -- their headlights pointing at my windows. And now you want them to go the opposite way, too, so they can shine the act the other way in my windows? Would you like for me to come over tonight with two spotlights and shine them in your windows a few times a day? How would you feel? Would you be calling this man right here? I guarantee you'd be calling this man right here saying, "Hey, someone's, you know, bugging me and harassing me." You know, these are the kind of issues you need to think through and not just look at, "Oh, let's build this big bridge." So I just challenge you. Try to do things that are good for the community and not just what you think is just a great project and it'll look flashy and great, and really work for the people of Manassia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Shannon Cadlec, 230 Main Street, business owner. I'm for refurbishing the bridge and not replacing and against the roundabout for the same reason that my other fellow business owners said, that it's safety issues. So I'm definitely against that, and it's right where my business is, too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. First item is Police Chief Steika. Alderman Taylor, you'll have time to speak this evening as part of the agenda. It looks like it's about the agenda. You have your opportunity as an alderman, Alderman Taylor. You have either the opportunity as an alderman and as a citizen?
Mayor, you spoke at this 45.
That's at the --
Point of order, Mayor.
What is your point of order?
My point of order is Mr. Taylor does have the right to have the floor. We did take this up in protocol, and therefore, he has the right to speak. I'd ask you to give him his five minutes if he wishes.
We have had this discussion, and is it the Attorney General who disputes that, that aldermen have the right to have the floor as part of the meeting and not as the public?
I have the floor back.
So I am going to deny -- hold on. I'm going to deny your point of order, and if you would like --
Continue. If you please let me continue. I don't care what he says. It doesn't matter. This body can change the rules.
They can by majority vote.
And we have done that personally, and we voted unanimously recently on the protocol to allow for council members to do this. Not only that, but at the last council meeting, Don, or Mayor, excuse me, you did take that option to go up there and speak also. I think as a courtesy, you should give that to Alderman Taylor.
At the end of the meeting, I would give him that courtesy to speak on things that the public spoke on, but if not, we'd have -- I am not -- I am denying that, so if you'd like to challenge it.
We'll take a vote.
We can take a vote.
Just so the council knows, the ruling. So the rest of the council understands. I'm challenging the mayor's ruling based on the fact that we just enacted our protocol committee's recommendations that allow for a council member to go up there, and also we gave the mayor that option last time. He's asking for five minutes. I'd ask you to allow for James to speak.
I'm just asking for the rules of order here, and I do not believe that that was in there.
Alderman Taylor would get to speak during the meeting. If you vote no, then you're allowing Alderman Taylor to speak as both an alderman and as a citizen.
Could we have a roll call? Yeah, we should put something up there, yeah. If you vote yes, you're upholding the point of order, and if you vote no, you are allowing him to speak as a citizen at this point in the meeting, as an alderman at other points Okay, so, yep. So if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion feels on roll call 1-7.
We will have a timer. I've been timing everyone. There was only one person that went slightly over.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking as a citizen today. At the last council meeting, the council voted for this workshop tonight, and I thank you for allowing the public to speak and myself to speak this evening and to inform the public on something this important. I'm not talking about myself in the third person, but as a citizen, I'm saying Alderman Taylor asked to notify the public by mail and include these five options in a letter to you, the public, about this project. They were not included in your letter. The council was notified by email of this letter being sent out. There was a link in that email that you could go and look at all five options. The public did not have these five options. Our meeting was May 7th. The letter was not mailed out and postmarked till May 14th and received at your mailboxes on May 16th. The transparency is very poor. The council, and that was part of the motion, that these documents be included in your letter. They were not -- the Department of Public Works deserves an F for not notifying the people. Last time I checked, the Constitution said "of, for, and by the people." Thank you.
The council spoke, and they wanted him to be able to do that, so. Report of Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. The first item is Chief Steika. He has the Police Week presentations.
Well, hopefully, on a lighter note, from everything that's been discussed today, we wanted to take a moment because last week is National Police Week, and that's the time where police departments across the country take a moment to stop and think about those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, their lives, giving to their communities in the line of duty. As part of that, we tend to want to recognize citizens that had an impact positively for the city as it relates to the police department, as well as we give some awards internally for some of the officers' actions and events that they were involved in over the past year. So I would like to start off with a couple of citizen recognition awards. What we did this year, we're actually touched and really moved by the actions of three families that lost loved ones this past year. When each of these families had -- When each of these families had lost their loved ones, what they decided to do as part of the funeral ceremonies was to take all the donations that were given at the funeral and donate it to the K-9 fund. When later tonight, in the administration committee, we'll be talking about the need for a new K-9. And it's through the generosity of these families as well as others that we should be able to move forward with that, be able to fund that program without looking for you for additional funds for that. So the first family that I'd like to have step up would be the family of Bernie Knetzki. If you'd like to join me right here. Bernie, or Bernard Knetzki, he actually worked for the city of Manasha as, and retired as an investigator. He worked for the Manasha Police Department for 32 years. He retired in 1992, I believe. He ended up passing away on January 26th, 2016, or 2018, so just a few months ago. Bernie was one of those that was extremely well-respected by his coworkers, his peers, and solved a heck of a lot of cases. It would be really interesting when you start thinking about someone like Bernie, what he would have been able to do with the technology and the resources and the things we have today. But as our first family, we'd like to thank you for thinking of the police department in, in your time of loss and donating to the K-9 funds. We appreciate that. We'd like to present you with the certificate.
Bernie would surely have been honored.
The next family I'd like to have step up would be the Donald Verkylund family. And receiving the award for the Donald Verkylund family will be Joseph Cops. Joseph was actually in Nina, Manasha, or actually, was it Nina, Manasha when you left? Just Manasha?
One fire department, Manasha.
All right, so he was a part of the only one fire department, the Manasha Fire Department, retiring back in about 1999?
Ninety-nine, yes, sir.
But Donald also served his community in a different way. He served in the United States Army in the Korean War and then ended up having a long career for Riverside Paper Company in Appleton, I believe. And we ended up losing your father December 29th of last year. And you thought of us and your family, so you have a long line of service, you personally as well as your father. And we just wanted to thank you and appreciate your, your thinking of us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And was anyone here from Dick Weck's family?
I didn't, we had asked the other person who we have an award for, but Dick ended up having a variety of medical issues towards the end of his life. And, but Dick was one who passed away on December 21st of, of last year at the age of 78. He worked for the police department for 32 years and he was one that was certainly known by a number of people in the community as well. Very respected supervisor that ended up retiring. You may have seen him walking around with his little dog for, for years and years after that. So with that, we want to move on to just a couple of quick introductions of some of the officer awards. One of the things that we generally do is we usually try to bring in the new officers over the past year to put a name with a face and give you a little introduction and bio of them. The only new officer, and we only do that after they've completed field training. Shelby Patterson is the new officer that we would have brought here tonight, but she ended up having court this morning. It's coming at 8 o'clock tonight and is working through the night shift tonight, so we weren't able to bring her tonight. Shelby is an outstanding young officer. She actually worked for us as a CSO as well as a complaint clerk and was the first person that we ended up sponsoring through portions of Recruite Academy as a police cadet officer. So excited to have her along with us and feel very fortunate to have her with us. So, on to a couple of the awards that we'll give. The first person I want to call up would be Officer John Abrahamsen. Now, the officers tonight, we won't be giving them any awards. We did our, we did have our award celebration last year, but again, to put a name with a face, and if they want, I don't think anyone wants to say anything, but if they do, we'd give them that opportunity. John received the Medal of Courage Award. It's awarded to an officer who has been seriously critically or fatally injured while performing the line of, uh, performance of duties. John is the officer who last year was investigating a drug overdose complaint where unfortunately the, the male individual passed away. As John was driving down to Oshkosh as part of the investigation of that, he started having a medical issue. John ended up, as we later found out, was exposed to fentanyl. And it was potentially, it was a lethal dose of the fentanyl. As he's driving down 41, he recognizes it and realizes he needs help and he needs help quick. Talked to John about it. It actually got to the point where it took two hands and a couple of tries to get the microphone, which is attached to the dashboard in the squad car, off of the dashboard to call out to say that he was having the issues. Presence of mind of John, it was absolutely amazing. We had just gone through training about Narcan and fentanyl a few weeks before this, so he recognized that, got himself off, got the vehicle off the roadway, and ended up going to the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department where he received two doses of Narcan and ended up reversing the impacts of the fentanyl and John's here today. Police Week this year would have been much different if John didn't do the things he did. We would have a police fatality in the city of Manasha. So with his quick thinking and his thoughts, he got it through. The other reason why I think John is very deserving of this award is not only after he had his experience, he ended up volunteering to do a training video that has been seen through officers now throughout the state of Wisconsin, explaining what he went through, his whole incident, and you never know on how many countless lives by John sharing his story, which is a personal story for him, but he's been more than willing to share that with others to hopefully make an impact with others in, in this field, so. John received that award and I again congratulate you and thank you for your work on that. Next officer I'll have come up is Officer Chris Greshel. Chris started his career with us, oh, about 100 years ago, it seems like. Chris actually started off as an auxiliary officer a number of years ago. And Chris has a passion for everyone in this community. Chris grew up, he's a Manasha boy, he bleeds Manasha blood. But one of the things Chris really takes a passion on are those folks in our community that have mental health issues. Chris actually serves on a suicide prevention awareness Board of Directors out of Kekana. He was instrumental in bringing peer support, which is a group of if officers or employees within a police department are having an issue, one of their peers can potentially help them out with those mental health issues. Chris has been very passionate about making sure that those with mental health in the community itself are cared for. Both he and Officer Swenson, for example, this past week have been dealing with a female who lives in the city of Manasha who has a therapy dog that got hit by a car, got away from her and, and she, she relies on that dog to get through on a daily basis. Chris and Sarah both now have been checking on her every day. The benevolent made a donation to help with the dog's medical bills, but just really going above and beyond for, for people in the community. And also reviewing some of Chris's work history over the last year, while you can get kind of geared towards doing some of those, um, uh, mental health types of things and helping people in that way, sometimes you can, I don't want to say get derelict of your other duties, but you know, it's not as, as good or as interesting to you, such as traffic stops or complaint investigations. But there were a number of times where Chris was recognized by others by really going above and beyond in investigations and the way he treats people. Had a number of employee, or a number of citizens contact us about how well Chris had treated them. So as a result, Chris was given what is called the Meritorious Service Award, which is presented to an officer who distinguishes themselves through professional skill, dedication to duty, or exceptional initiative in a non-combat action. And I think the key of this one is which enhances the image effectiveness or efficiency of the department. Chris certainly has exhibited that this past year, so we were proud to give him that award. And finally, Officer Josh Gallagher. Officer Gallagher has been with us for approximately five years. Josh came to us and like new people, he's trying to figure out his way, I guess is the best way to do it, because there's so many things and it's, it's fairly overwhelming when you first start off as a police officer. But Josh really found his niche and what we recognized over this past year is he's become a go-to guy internally for us on a number of procedural types of things that we could use a hand for. He's taken over some computer stuff, which otherwise we would really have to rely on IT services in the city a lot more. But what really kind of got us was a number of the citizens that contacted us about his. I put one of the comments that was made by a citizen in your council packet tonight. One citizen said, "I was stopped by Officer Josh Gallagher for minor traffic violation. He treated me how I'd want to be treated by one of my kids. It made me think and feel that it's important to give thanks to the men and women in law enforcement." So with that being said, to Officer Gallagher, thank you so much for being nice, understanding, and extremely professional. When you talk about Officer of the Year, that's really what we're trying to embody. We're trying to make sure that Josh in this case or this year is really the person that we want to make sure is responding to your calls for need when, when you have it. One other story I'll give about Josh that, that he did that kind of shows you his compassion is there was a woman who ran out of gas on Racine Street and out of Josh's own pocket this past year, he ended up helping fill it up her gas tank so she could get on her way and, and move on to it. This is the kind of behavior that you don't read about or see in the newspaper on a daily basis, but these are the men and women that serve you in the police department, him and Asha. And Josh this year really embodied that, so we're glad to give him the Officer of the Year Award. Finally, I would like to thank you for the support that you've given the police department. Obviously, we can only be as good as, as the support that we have from the community and the support of the council, as well as our citizens, is what has allowed us to become the department that we are, so thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda this evening, whoops, I missed one. Moving on to the minutes and communications, do we have a moment, a motion to receive the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move that we receive minutes A through H and communications I through K.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Yes, um, just Communication I, the one from myself about the televising of the meetings. I believe on there it said channel four, but I believe it's channel two. Sorry, I don't have Time Warner, I have U-verse, so, but the mayor is actually the one that put that channel number on. I don't know what, I think he has an antenna.
I have an antenna and I did send those to you to proof, so we both are...
Yep, we're both guilty.
Guilty, not knowing what channel it's on.
Yep. It's two.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have nine items this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council of May 7th, the administration committee recommendations from May 7th to accept the bid of the Post Crescent Media as the official city newspaper, the Board of Public Works recommendations from May 7th for the street use application for the Cut &amp; Run Loop the Lake grand opening on June 23rd, the street use application for the Community Fest Parade of Lights on July 3rd, the street use application for the Otto Grunske Runski on August 11th, the street use application for Race the Lake on August 26th. There's a lot of them. The street use application for the Twisted Piston Scholarship Cruisin' on August 16th, a payment to Vinton Construction Company for the Main Street Reconstruction Project for $233,642.43, and a payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for the Fox River Loop the Lake Bridge Crossing of $30,803.24, and the Plan Commission recommendation for the certified survey map as proposed dividing 1377 Midway Road into two parcels. Does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Because the two items are large expense items, payments to Vinton Construction Number Eight and a payment of Pfeiffer Brothers Construction, Item Nine.
Alderman Grady?
Oh, I was just gonna say ditto.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, Item Four, please.
Seeing no others, do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for Items One, Two, Three, Five, Six, and Seven.
And Ten.
There, there is a Ten?
Nope, there is a Ten, yes.
Oh, and a Ten? Hold on a second.
That's the certified survey.
Okay, and Ten.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call. Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item number four is the street use application for the Community Fest Parade. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Taylor?
I'll make a motion to approve the street use application Community Fest Parade of Lights Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, 9:00 PM to 10:15 PM, cities of Nina and Manasha.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruter. Do we have discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Director Tungate, uh, in the past, the Community Fest parades, we used to rotate where the parade starts. And that was done to some, a few years ago, it seems like, the parade always starts in Nina and then some Manasha. And I know from a lot of parents with young children, you know, the parade doesn't get here until 10 o'clock and because it was in the, uh, the togetherness of the Community Fest, it was always rotated like that. Are we going to be getting back to that rotation or why was that rotation changed?
Well, so with the help of the city clerk, we were, we were able to sort of look back in the archives and sort of figure out what has happened there. So since 2011, the parade has gone from Nina to Manasha. So the last seven years, it's done that. And to the best of our, I guess our research, it was done mainly for event planning purposes and by that, I mean, there's nonprofit groups that are benefiting by the use of Curtis Reed Square. There's music and food and so forth going down there and it was really, the last six years or so, the Manasha Girls Basketball Association has benefited by that. So I think it was really done through the Community Fest Committee and it's benefited, you know, Manasha nonprofit groups. So I, you know, that's, I believe the reason why it's stayed that way for the last seven years.
Oh, Nina also has events they've always had in the valley and parking lots and things. And I know it was because they participated in many floats through the years and, uh, it was always that, and I think we should go back to that. I think it's fair to both communities that it starts and ends and especially to the parents of very young children that it doesn't even get here until 10 o'clock and then it's 10:30, quarter 11. And even if it started here, the event in Manasha would still benefit with the music and everything that we have for that, so. In kind of a cooperation of both communities, Community Fest, I would like to see, we revisit that and see if we can get that back. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to also add to that, being on the Community Fest Committee for a few years, the Community Fest Parade always ended in the community that had the band. So if the band was in Manasha, it ended in Manasha. If it had, the band was in Nina, it ended in Nina. In 2011 or thereabouts, the benefactor of Community Fest, who raises the money, decided that it would benefit everyone if we had two events, one in Nina and one in Manasha. And they started funding the second event in downtown Nina. And the event in downtown Nina has been the Pyjama Jam, which is geared towards young kids. And the event in Manasha has been a, a band that's been more geared to teenagers and up. And that is why the parade at that point switched to a starting in Nina, ending in Manasha, because the Pyjama Jam needed to be at the beginning of the parade. So if we went back, I'm not sure that we would both have a band every year and as Director Tungate said, that has benefited some Manasha... And as Director Tungate said, that has benefited some Manasha groups quite significantly. So that was a little bit of the rationale as to why that changed at that point. Alderman Taylor?
And this is why it was brought up to me by parents of young kids in Manasha. So I think we should just respect the kids in Nina and respect the kids in Manasha, too. And that's why it was brought to my attention. And I'm sure we can work this out, where we could do the switch every other year. And it was a good thing in the past. And I'm sure, very confident that we can make this happen. And both have entertainment, too.
Seeing no other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 8 is the payment to Vinton Construction Company. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for payment to Vinton Construction Company, Contract Unit Number 2018-01, the Main Street Reconstruction, in the amount of $233,642.43. This is our first payment.
Here's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote? I'm sorry, I went too fast.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 9 is the payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction Company, Contract Unit Number 2017-04, the Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing, for $30,803.24. This is payment number 4.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for May 10 through 17. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols? I'm looking the wrong way. We changed chairs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 10 through May 17, 2018, in the amount of $460,440.91.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period, as listed on the Police Department's memo dated May 16, 2018.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 3 is a memorandum of agreement. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the memorandum of agreement with PH Gladfelter Company.
Is there a second? Is it Steve? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Are there questions? I take it that there are, that there was almost no second. Alderman Nichols?
Attorney Captain, could you briefly describe what this is about and what we're being asked to do this evening?
Attorney Captain?
As part of the Fox River litigation and cleanup, PH Gladfelter Company entered into what's called a consent decree with Circuit Court and promised to do certain things, including ensure that the engineered caps that are in place in an area that's... They have various sections of the lower or of the Fox River that are designated. They're called operable units, and this would be an operable unit 1, which is an area that would include the city of Manasha and the village of Fox Crossing, which is why those two municipalities are identified in the memorandum of agreement. But the agreement is really between Gladfelter Company and then the county, Winnebago County, because the county has some GIS offerings that it agreed to do relative to what Gladfelter has to do to maintain the caps, to have an inspection and et cetera. And to report it, make sure that it's available to the public. And so what both the city of Manasha and the village of Fox Crossing, what their role would be, is just to identify a position or a person on an annual basis to whom this report should go to at the city, so that if the public makes an open records request, they would be able to receive it. So that's all the role is of the city of Manasha and village of Fox Crossing.
Thank you.
Is there other discussion? Ready? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance 4. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for ordinance O4-18 and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances for municipal officers, employees.
Is there a second? Alderman, second by Alderman Grady? Is there discussion?
Yes. It's just that... If you would just bear with me for a second. We had some comments earlier and some concerns about this particular ordinance. What we've been trying to do here at City Hall is clean up some of our ordinances. The council also has a committee called the Protocol, where we've introduced new rules of conduct for our own body here, and also how we choose to hire people. And I guess, I mean, we've got two ordinances here, and I want to make sure I got the right questions. So one concern is this... This one doesn't pertain to the city assessor, does it? Is that the following one?
It's the city assessor.
Attorney Captain? Did you want to comment on that?
There is. That is... I mean, Sandra's right, that is a state statute thing, and that has not changed. But I'll have the city attorney address that, if she wouldn't mind.
Attorney Captain?
And maybe just to clarify, that if there is something that is underlined, that would be new. If there is a strike through, it's proposed for deletion. And if there's nothing, then that already is in the ordinance. And Alderman Sevenek is correct that there is nothing changing with regard to the city assessor.
And that what?
Or the city attorney.
Right, I was just going to say.
Or the... Or the city clerk.
Right. These are... I was going to say Alderman Taylor again, but Sandra Taylor is correct. These are covered under state statutes. And they are appointed by us as the Common Council, and it... Those are for terms. And in these cases, it's for a three-year term. So those stay in existent. The next one deals with department heads and city officials, correct?
That's... The officials are... Or officers, city officers.
Officers, I'm sorry. Can't even read my own writing.
Right, are in A, and then in B is department heads.
Right.
So that would mean, really, that there's only three left. And that would be the Director of Parks, Recreation, Forestry and Cemeteries, the Public Health Director, and the Community Development Director. And there is a difference between the city officers and the department heads.
Correct. And they are also outlined clearly how those individuals are hired. We have not made any changes to that process. I think there was some concern about... Oh, there was one change. The mayor and I added a change. We added that... Actually, we added that the Personnel Chair is involved with the mayor's hiring process, where that wasn't in there before. So we actually, the mayor compromised and put in an area where we do have a say with our representative to be involved with the hiring of not necess... With certain department heads. And those are all outlined, and none of that has changed. That one part changed because the mayor was willing to compromise and give us this body a say in hiring matters. And then, of course, they do share that information with this body, so... The Personnel Committee does not hire anybody.
So we did that reciprocally. So the, under the appointment of city officers, we had the Common Council will appoint them, and the mayor would be on the interview committee. And on the department heads, we had the mayor will make the appointment with the chair of the Personnel Committee on the interview committee, to make sure that everyone had some stake within those processes.
And actually, you know, I'd like to thank Sandra Taylor for bringing this to our attention, because it has helped us to clean up the ordinance in order for us to be able to have something more clear before us.
So is there other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 7-1.
Item 2 is ordinance 10. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor.
Doesn't want to... There we go.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like for this body to approve ordinance O1018, the ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, the mayor and common council, introduced by myself.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols, that... That's interesting. Didn't show up on my screen, but it showed up over there, so...
Thank you, Mayor. In reading this over again in preparation for tonight's meeting, I did... I think I found something that is a mismatch between the ordinance and our current adopted council rules. And that is in Section 2-2-8, Internal Powers of the Council. It's a couple pages in. I'll give you a second to find it. It's at the bottom of a page, 2-2-8. And about three lines up from the bottom of the page, it starts to talk about absences from meetings. And it says that any alderman who cannot attend a council meeting or committee meeting shall be recorded as absent excused, or in case of a failure to notify, it would be absent unexcused. And I believe in the council rules that we just passed, it was left as absent or... Present or absent?
I can figure out where it is in here. So within the rules that were passed at the organizational meeting, Section 1.03, Notification of Absence of Members.
Yes.
The Protocol Committee recommended, "Any alderman who cannot attend a common council meeting or committee meeting shall notify the mayor, clerk, or president of the council or committee chair in advance if he, she is unable to attend such meeting, except in the case of an emergency. Aldermen shall be recorded present or absent on the official minutes. If an alderman enters the meeting after it convenes or leaves before it adjourns, the time shall be noted in the official minutes."
And those were passed by resolution a few weeks ago.
At the organizational meeting, yes, in April.
So would be the... Would the method of fixing that be to make a motion to change it to what the...
Attorney Captain?
It would be to strike the last two sentences in Section 2-2-8. So moved.
So there's a motion and a second to strike the last two sentences. And I'm going to read those just so everyone knows what they are. It says, "Any alderman who cannot attend common council meeting or committee meeting shall be recorded as absent-excused if he, she has notified the mayor, city clerk, president of the council, or committee chair if he, she is unable to attend such meeting. Failure to notify shall result in that alderman being recorded as absent unexcused." So there was a motion and was there a second to amend? Alderman Sevenek? Any discussion on just the amendment at this time?
Is that correct, Mayor?
Oh. I don't know if it's exactly right, but... Yes, to remove those last two sentences.
Those last two sentences.
Mm-hmm. Okay, seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
So now the ordinance is before you as amended. Do we have any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, for the public, could the attorney walk us through any changes in ordinance
Sure, if you'd like. Attorney Captain?
So what this ordinance is proposed to do is, there's nothing that I can think of that was added. It's all proposed to be deleted. And the items that are being deleted are being deleted because they are contained in the resolution that was adopted by this common council, establishing its rules of order. And so since it's in the rules of order, then it would be removed from the ordinance. And then each time that another council desires to change the rules, they will adopt their own rules at the beginning of each session of a new common council. So that's what it does, is it's just removing those things in the ordinance that are contained in the rules of order. contained in the rules of order.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
So again, for the public, uh, the strike through means what and the underlying means what?
Go ahead, Attorney Captain.
What's proposed in this ordinance is just deletions, so they would be identified using strike throughs?
Okay. And there's no underlying here, but the underlying is the new changes?
There, there would be no additions to this. So the addition, basically, this document, Resolution fourteen dash eighteen, is basically the items that are crossed off in this ordinance.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call, this is the ordinance as amended.
Motion carried on roll call seven, one.
Item three is an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter one of the Code of Ordinances. It's ordinance number eleven regarding finance and the city budget. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make the motion for the move of ordinance O-eleven dash eighteen, an ordinance amending chapter three, or Title III, I'm sorry, Chapter one of the Code of Ordinances, finance city department budget, introduced by myself, recommended by Administrative Council Committee.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
Item four is Resolution seventeen, a resolution continuing appropriations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Uh, I will make that motion. Before I do, could we have a, um, description from Director Jacobs about what this resolution does?
Director Jacobs?
As part of the year-end audit process from the end of the two thousand seventeen audit, um, we do have to have the council, uh, recognize and approve the amount of the carryforwards, which are actually, um, assigning reservations to some of the, uh, fund balance of different funds, which would be the general fund and any of the other funds. Um, this does include the carryforwards, um, that the departments have requested, um, to myself and to the mayor, which we have reviewed together. And then I prepared the memo that actually indicated the funding source that is coming for these and the total dollar amount for the general fund and for any other funds, which actually would include the IT fund and also, um, the CIP fund. So the projects you have listed here are indicating, um, those items. And the way I prepared the memo was that it indicated in the narrative that there were some funds recognized and there are some that you'd previously approved going forward. So I indicated and kind of broke it out. So you saw what the new piece was for the two thousand seventeen portion and then what the previous years was. When you add the two together, that is the amount that you, as the city council tonight, are taking into consideration for our annual financial audit of saying, these are the amounts that are being reserved of the fund balance of the city. And then that will then carry forward to next year to allow them for the appropriation, um, for those funds for things that haven't been spent or monies that have been collected to date that we just haven't utilized as of yet.
And this is something that's done every year?
Every, it's an annual process, yes. But it's something we need to have you take consideration of prior to the final audit being presented to you in the next couple months.
Thank you. I'll move to approve R-dash seventeen dash eighteen, a resolution continuing appropriations, the two thousand seventeen fund balance reservation as introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There was a motion and a second. Alderman Tom Grady and Alderman Sevick?
Thank you, Mayor. As John stated, just for the new members, this is, uh, an annual thing that we do. It's, uh, just carryover. But John, um, can you explain a little bit further, uh, conversation that you, you and the mayor had with myself pertaining to going back, um, with possible funding in two thousand and twenty?
Uh, yes, as it, part of the memo, at the very end of my memo, I did have a separate, and it's not part of this carryforward appropriation.
It's not, then we won't, just we'll.
Well, um, the thing is.
It is to a degree.
It is to a degree. Um, it's not a quantified dollar amount that you're actually making for the audit.
But it's something different.
Uh, yes. We know, um, as part of the review of the two thousand seventeen year-end, we had a budget surplus of meaning revenues greater than expenditures of about ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. We had budgeted for, at the beginning of the budget year, you had, um, allowed for a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars of the fund balance could be used as a revenue source if needed, um, to cover and not have to, um, tax levy the remaining portion to balance the budget, um, at the beginning of the two thousand seventeen year. So what happened is with the surplus being about ninety-nine thousand five hundred, you did not need to dip into the fund balance of a hundred fifty-five. So one thing I had mentioned to the mayor and also to, uh, Council President Sevick is that we know in year two thousand twenty, we will have the twenty, that every, this occurrence happens every eleven years, um, you will have a twenty-seventh pay period. We, under the expenditure restraint program, cannot, it, it's gonna be about between three hundred and three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the general fund. It'll hit other funds, but this is the fund that is the one that's under the radar with the Department of Revenue. Um, we have another extra three hundred to three hundred twenty-five thousand to put on top of our normal budget process. So with my, um, recommendation to the mayor and to, um, Alderman Sevick is that if we haven't dipped into the fund balance for a hundred fifty-five thousand, would we be allowed to then carry that amount forward, put that away and bank that monies so that we can go ahead and then be able to pay the twenty-seventh pay period without having to have service level cuts across the board to fund that twenty-seventh pay period, because we are paid bi-weekly here across all departments and all funds. Uh, and to allow that to be used there, um, for two thousand twenty, so we have the monies there. Because otherwise, my fear is when we get to two thousand twenty, we're like, oh, my gosh, we either have to have cuts of three hundred to three hundred twenty-five thousand to be able to afford that, or we either will have to have layoffs, or you're gonna have to have service level cuts or something for one year. So, and then going forward, once we would, what normal communities typically do is they budget for one additional day in their budget. So you budget for twenty-six pay periods plus one day. Some years you have, um, a leap year, so actually it would accrue two days. Some years, for us in administration areas, we don't work weekends, so we wouldn't have to budget for that, but we would for public safety because police and fire do work fourteen days in a bi-weekly pay period. So the question that I was presenting, or, um, was that could we not use the hundred fifty-five thousand, bank that, put that away and allow that to be funding for, at least, and the libraries, I've already pitched this and discussed this with the library board, and they put it in their request, um, for their carryforward amount instead of utilizing their budget surplus. They are applying it towards that because they're governed by the library board, which is different than the city council here. So I said for the rest of the other departments, I, I offered it as a suggestion, just thinking ahead three years what the challenge might be and not trying to have to worry about the consequences then and trying to be proactive on this.
And what I want to say is that's why we hired John. And thank, you know, because this is a, a huge savings that, that could be, you know, one of the street projects that we might want to do or something like that and, you know, as far as the savings for a community. So I want to commend him and the mayor on, um, putting that forward. I know that, that can be kind of confusing. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not a numbers guy, but I'm sure Ted understood it all.
So John, would you like them to include that with the motion?
Uh, yes, that would be helpful as to prove the resolution seventeen dash eighteen, but also to make mention of the un, um, the unassigned balance of a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars from the two thousand seventeen budget, to have that applied towards and bank those funds for, uh, budget year two thousand twenty.
So would we like? Alderman Nichols?
I'll offer that amendment.
Okay, did you get that amendment, Debbie? So there'd be amendment to direct staff to apply the additional hundred fifty-five thousand fund balance in the two thousand seventeen budget to the budget year two thousand twenty for the twenty-seventh bi-weekly pay period. I was trying to read a little bit between the lines there. Let's see if we got it close.
I hear Alderman Ted Grady or Alderman Tom Grady? Ted with this one.
Let's put that up there and make sure John likes that.
Are you voting on this as an amendment?
A separate amendment, yes. Getting pretty good at this. So John, is that good?
You see that, John? Do you want me to add anything to that, or?
Somehow we want to make sure that it's called like assigned in there, include the, um, on a second.
You used applied.
Yes, I think applied, because it's the amount that was applied in the original budget to be available for fund balance. And we're gonna call it assigned at the end of two thousand seventeen year-end audit.
So what do you want it to say? Include the applied amount?
Sure, that would be better.
Of one hundred fifty-five and then assign it to the budget year two thousand twenty?
Yes.
Get that clear as mud now?
And if you want to say the twenty-seventh bi-weekly pay period?
Does that look better?
He's nodding yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
And now we have the motion as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could, are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Maybe.
Motion carried on bro- motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
Okay, item L is appointments. The first is the appointment of the Protocol Committee. And if anyone would like to take my place, they'd be, I'd be happy to surrender that. Alderman Sevick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the appointments of the Protocol Committee.
Second. So the motion is to appoint the mayor, common council president, Personnel Committee Chair and the city attorney as the ad hoc Protocol Committee, correct? Was there a second?
Yes, Alderman Langdon.
Okay, by Alderman Langdon. Alderman Taylor?
I know sometimes you can't make meetings, so I'd be happy to fill in for you.
You can amend it if you'd like and you can, you can take my spot. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious why we're doing this right now. I guess I don't understand why we're doing this when we just finished up with the Protocol Committee and we have established council rules and now those can be changed, um, at the beginning of every council.
I can let Alderman Sevick because he was the one who really brought this forward.
Well, every year we have a Protocol Committee in case we have issues that need to be, we may never meet, but I know we do have one issue that we have to address as a Protocol Committee. And that issue was.
I already forgot what it was too, but it'll pop up in our mind.
I just talked about it before and I can't think of it. Um, it's, it's the process of, well, anyways, we need to address whatever it might be. But, uh, so there's one issue already that we have to address. And what that would do is then go for the future council. So every year, it's a, it's a annual thing that we have to take care of. I mean, we may have situations where we will have a situation where we have to discipline or something like that, or, or council members want to change something and they recommend it to committee, so. That's, uh, the mayor and I, we got together and because this is the way we want to, also, oh, that's it, how we establish the Protocol Committee is one of them. We feel that Personnel Chair would be the, probably the best person for that, because it's really personnel-related issues and that, so.
All right.
So it's not a committee that would meet regularly, but upon call?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
Item two is the appointment of Christina Turner to the library board. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger? Oops.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the mayoral appointment of Christina Turner to the library board for the term of five twenty-one, two thousand eighteen, to seven one, two thousand twenty.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing, um, the motion carries. Item N is action items. The first one is a request from Alderman Taylor to place something on the next council agenda. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion, uh, to place on the next council agenda, remove alternative J and recommend alternative B as the preferred option for the Racine Street Bridge. And the city of Manassas has no interest in the ownership of the Racine Street Bridge.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Alderman Taylor?
That's fine.
That's fine. Alderman Sevick?
Thank you, Mayor. Just so the public and, and this body understands, tonight, this isn't a motion to do what this is. This is to allow for it to appear on the next meeting's agenda.
Alderman Langdon?
I would like to make the motion to allow this to be on the agenda act, on, as an action item at a later date to be determined.
You'd like to postpone this?
Be a postponement. Postpone, well, I'd like to make a motion to postpone then to a later date to be determined, not in two weeks, but to determine, be out there and we could grab it if we needed it.
So there's a motion to postpone. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is that debatable or not? The attorney said technically that would be a motion to table because there's no date on it.
Okay.
So if that is.
No, 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 no.
And then, and then you, it's the same thing. You need somebody to.
Can you, is that a valid motion under Revets' rules to postpone to a date to, to just?
Can you, is that a valid motion under Robert's rules to postpone to a date, to, to just
postpone without a date? Okay, I guess it is. It's valid the way it was. Okay, it's more or less the same thing, but it's valid. Alderman Grady?
I guess my question is, is there a reason why? Can I ask that for the postponement? Alderman Langdon?
Yeah, because, as it says here, it says to remove alternative J and recommend alternative B. I don't know what alternative B is. As a preferred option for the Racine Street Bridge, the City of Manasha has no interest in ownership, but we don't have anything in front of us to vote on for B. I don't have nothing in front of me and won't have nothing in front of me in two weeks to vote on B. There's nothing, so B actually doesn't mean anything.
Okay. Can this maybe be worded into two different action items here then or leave as is for you? I'm just getting at it. It sounds like it's confusing that it's all married together as to one item.
To me, this is confusing. That's why I made the motion to
Postpone.
Postpone until a later date, and so if we needed information, whoever we would need that from. The reason I'm making the motion is Alderman Severnick and myself made, we got together with Rep. Amanda Stuck one day, and we also then, Alderman Severnick and myself got, met with Senator Roth. And I had a phone call into him this past Friday, but he was busy and busy over the weekend. Alderman Severnick ran into him for like ten seconds, but I want to postpone this until we hear something down the road from Senator Roth on which way, whatever. I just don't want to say, okay, we're going to vote on B and, but we don't have any information. I want to wait till I hear from Senator Roth. That's why I made this motion.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Langdon.
Alderman Taylor?
I'm going to yield the floor at this time.
Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we need to postpone it. I think we know what the two alternatives are, but that's not what we're doing tonight. Again, we're just allowing this, we're saying, hey, should we allow this to be an item that can go on the agenda? And that's what all this does. And then, in the next coup, well, is it two weeks that we have our next meeting?
About that. The first meeting in June.
And, and we'll make sure that you get alternative B. And alternative B is the, the one that most of the people in the gallery talked about today about redecking and changing out the mechanism for the Racine Street Bridge, the existing bridge, and, you know, you're getting a new bridge when you do that too.
Okay, we shouldn't debate the item.
So, but, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, okay, thank you, Mayor, and I, so anyways, that's all that does. I don't think we need to necessarily postpone it because, can I talk about what Senator Roth said to me or do you want me to?
We should kind of, it should be just, should it stay or shouldn't? It's...
That's exactly it, so.
Okay. Alderman Raula?
Thank you, Mayor. I just was reading what Alderman Taylor for the action item. It'd be nice if we could do, actually, he has two things in there as far as remove the alternative J and recommend alternative B. That's, that could be in itself one, one part of his, and then the second part could be the no interest in ownership. Those are two separate entities, actually.
And those could be divided if it does hit the agenda?
Got it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Alderman Taylor?
I took this language from our meeting in June last year. This is exactly how it appeared last June on the council agenda. So, meeting with legislature Amanda Stuck, she asked that we revisit this by the new council and bring this...
This should be on whether it should go on the agenda or not?
And I was asked to bring this, to put this on the new council and have the new council approve this, but tonight, all it is, is it's taking it from here tonight and we'll be able to have it on the agenda for June fourth to, to vote on at that time. And alternative B, we should bring that back to the new members of the council. All that was, was to...
We're not talking about what it is, just should it go on the agenda or not?
Okay, is reconstruction. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. then I'll take back my motion. I'll take that off. Seeing that...
Once a motion is accepted, I don't think you can take it back, correct? It belongs to the body, so once, so we'd have to take up...
So, we'll just, okay.
We have to take up this motion and then move forward depending on what happens. Alderman Nichols?
I just want to remind everyone here this evening that this is a decision that was made in 2014. It was made, a process was followed, and to, to, to...
She's, yeah, we should talk about should it be postponed.
To bring this back again is, I just want to say you better be careful what you wish for at this point. It's been four years. I think it's dangerous. I think we need to move ahead.
What is your point of order?
You don't need it.
Seeing no further discussion, right now, the two, it's just to postpone, no, no date?
To a date certain. He didn't say a date.
To be, a date to be determined.
Date, okay.
Date determined?
Yeah, to be determined, not a date certain. Alderman Nichols?
So, at the end of the day, what does that motion mean?
It means that it would be postponed until someone else asked for it to be placed on the agenda again.
Just like table.
Just like a table.
So, someone would need to ask to have that motion placed back on?
Yes.
This motion?
The, yes, the motion to have it appear on the next council agenda.
Yes, and then that would need a vote to bring...
That motion to the next council meeting at that point, yes.
We would, would it need a vote to even bring this to discussion? In other words, if it were as a table, we would need a motion to remove it from the table?
Yes, so that it would appear then on the next meeting that someone asks for it to be placed on this same request is what that would do.
But then we'd have, would we need a motion to bring it back to the, to put it on the table?
No, because it's not a table. So, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion fails on roll call one seven.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor at this point is the request to place this on the next common council agenda. Alderman Nichols? Oops, sorry.
Move to postpone indefinitely.
Is there a second? There's no second, so the motion dies. Any further discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Could, could someone please briefly explain to the public and to the rest of the council why we're going through this whole process on voting on putting something on the agenda so everybody understands why we're doing this? Thank you.
So, so Robert's Rules gives the committee chair the ability to place things on the agenda. The city ordinance directs the mayor to direct something that is being requested to be placed on the common council agenda to the Committee of Jurisdiction. So, this was requested that I place it on the common council agenda. I said the Committee of Jurisdiction would be the Committee of the Board of Public Works, and the Chair of the Board of Public Works declined to place that on their agenda at this time. So, then the person asked, again, to have it placed on the common council agenda. The council president requested from me how we could get it on the council agenda. I had stated that it's been on the agenda numerous times and been decided before, and if he wanted to have it placed on the agenda, it would need to be via a vote of the common council, and that is what's on the agenda this evening. And if this motion fails, it would not appear on the agenda. If it passes, it would appear on the June, did you say, fourth agenda? So, I think, does that, synopsis, okay. Alderman Severnick?
I was going to explain it. You did well.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Seeing none, then we'll have a roll call vote. This is to place it on the next agenda.
Motion carried on, roll call six two.
Item O is public comments. Any matter listed on the agenda? Oh, sorry. Oh, there's not even a mic up there.
Sandra DeBelle Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. That was so convoluted. I want to echo Alderman Kruger's question. Any Alderman has a right to place any item on an agenda.
No.
Yes, according to your city code unless you change it again. Secondly, the mayor does not have the right to remove an item from agenda. That's both in the state statute, refresher with the League of Municipalities, and Robert's Rules of Order, and I've brought that up before. And that was part of the reason I was so concerned about changing this code because it appears to me that you are removing things from the current Code of Ordinances and moving them into a resolution. Therefore, the public will no longer have access to how anything on the council works because while I can pull up the Code of Ordinances on the website, I can't pull up a resolution. And if every year, you're going to vote on a new resolution on how this council's going to run, the public is never going to know what's going on. And then, thirdly, you have a Protocol Committee that's an ad hoc committee that meets when it feels like it, doesn't meet when it doesn't feel like it. The public never knows when you're meeting. There are no minutes. There is no agenda. So, again, the public's cut out. The mayor can't even put on meetings for the Board of Public Works, the administration, or personnel, or parking wreck, or landmarks on the calendar. The public is just cut out of the conversation entirely. And I'm at the point, I mean, honestly, this all started with the last couple, and this is absolutely no offense to the people that are holding the positions because they're doing a fine job, but the mayor was appointing department heads, and it wasn't going through the council. And I had serious questions about that. Instead of the mayor getting reprimanded, let's change the ordinance and then it's all okay. We've done that with the lease agreement, with the kayak thing. That should have went through protocol. Well, no, we'll change the rules. We're kind of changing the rules to cover our butt is what we're doing, and I'm very concerned about this, and I'll be free to email all of you, League of Municipalities, Attorney's Recommendation, and State Statute that all say numerous times, the mayor does not set the agenda.
I'll have a memo to, to respond to Mrs. Taylor's comments at the next meeting. Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Sandra, the Protocol Committee has been posted every time for the public, and the minutes have been published every time, and I have a file that thick if anybody wants to look at it. So, they, the city clerk does her job and she knows what she's doing.
Seeing no other further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.